Good evening, everybody. This is 6:30 PM. A call to meeting the order for the City of Walker Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is to review the meeting minutes from March 2. We had any comments or questions, or perhaps a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, motion by Scott, supported by Tyler to approve the minutes from March 2. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Next item is a general public comment. This is an opportunity to speak to non-agenda items. If there's an issue or concern that you have in the community, this is an opportunity to come forward, give you your name and address, and indicate your concerns, or otherwise, we have three projects that are on the docket this evening, and when those come up, we take a comment at that time. Do you have something on a non-agenda item? Okay.
My name is Frank Segalas with 695 Lincoln Lawns Drive Northwest, right on the corner of Lincoln Lawns Drive in Marlboro Northwest. This evening, I wanted to address the Planning Commission about the drainage problem that we've had over the last 32 years that I've lived in the area. It's been addressed, so to speak, like putting lipstick on a pig, okay? It's still there. It's not really been addressed fully. It's been addressed independently of what the total situation is with our groundwater, not just for one backyard, but through the whole area. And now it's really coming to light because of what we're going to present later on this evening, number 3. So I wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission knows what's going on here fully, and I wish that the Kent County Drain Commission would have been involved in this 32 years ago for a solution that would have solved what's going on today with all the flooding going on in our area in the backyards. And I will show those slides later with number 3. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any who else have any general public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the first agenda item. Case number 22-004. This is a site plan review. 3164 Wilson Avenue. And I'll look to our Planning Director, Tricia, to introduce the project, please.
Thanks, Terry. This is a site plan review for 3164 Wilson Avenue Northwest. And the name of the company that is applying for this site plan review is Canona Industries. So the project type is site plan review. The lot size here is 5.06 acres. The zoning district is light industrial. The future land use is business, and the community character designation is enterprise. And the general location of the project site is on the east side of Wilson, just north of 3 Mile, within the North Wilson Commerce Park. This is a plat. And we have Casey Peters from DNK Construction and Brandon Simon from Progressive AE, who I think is here tonight. So before I go into the background on this site, I should just mention that Canona Industries is a company that specializes in the manufacturing of machines and machine parts that are used in the manufacturing industry. And I know that sounds really broad. So if one of the Canona representatives is here tonight, I'm sure they will go into that a little bit further to give them a chance to brag about what they're doing. So you may recognize this site as we have already done a site plan review at this, on this property, a couple of years ago. So a company called Specialty Glass proposed a similar, a similar site plan, and that never came to fruition. So the Canona Industries is currently located just east of the site, the subject site. So they already have an operation here, and because of some positive growth that they've had within the company, they just need more space. And so they want to expand on this site, which they share a little bit of a property line here. Their plan is to keep this existing building, build another building on this site. And as far as I know, there's no plans at this time to integrate or combine the two parcels. So the proposed improvements for this site include 90,500 square feet of warehousing space, and they plan to situate about 5,000 square feet of office within a mezzanine level within the building. They're proposing 71 total parking spaces, site lighting, landscaping, stormwater management facilities, and infrastructure, connection to public water and sanitary sewer. And they will be preserving just a small portion of the existing wetlands. So this is the site plan right here. They're proposing several loading docks here. This is a one-way drive for truck traffic to enter here, go around the back of the building and exit here. They also have an employee parking lot. You got that? Who's that? Is that Terry? Okay, so this is a pretty big building footprint, and this site is pretty well covered with wetlands. And so really, our only comment tonight is the fact that before being granted any building permits, the applicant will have to work with Eagle to obtain their wetland permit. And Scott will talk a little bit about that in more depth. But the only other comment that I had was that the applicant just needs to revise the sheet index. So the staff is recommending approval of this site plan, and I have just five conditions. One of the, I just wanted to point out that one of the conditions that I wanted to be careful to try to add to all of these requests is number five. The applicant may be required to provide a financial guarantee in the form of a letter of credit or cash escrow deposit to ensure the quality completion of site-related items, such as landscaping, mainly landscaping, at the time of building permit issuance. The reason I'm adding that is because, yes, we generally do that, but the ordinance specifically says that the Planning Commission has to make that decision. So if it's added as a condition of approval, then it's rolled into the Planning Commission's decision. And then the other general conditions, we'll need three sealed sets to be submitted to the Community Development Department before we issue building permits. The revision of the sheet index, working with Eagle to get a wetland permit, and then also working with Scott to address any items that he might have in his report. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Tricia. Commissioners, any comments, questions?
What would the deposit be on that escrow amount? Do we have any kind of formula or anything that they would previously know about?
So it's usually related to landscaping. So what we can do is ask the developer to give us their landscaping quote, and then the financial guarantee will either be a letter of credit or a cash escrow deposit. If it's a really big amount, they can do a surety bond. But it's in, it's equal to the cost of the materials and labor for landscaping. That's also indicated in the Zoning Enabling Act.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll turn to Scott Connors, our city engineer.
So it seems like every time we turn around, Canona's doing another expansion, so that's great news. And they seem to have the system down pretty well. They're working with DNK, who also does a lot of work here. And as a result, you get a site plan like this that's ready to go. So the only issue that we need to have resolved is that when that wetland permit is issued, we want to have the permit number and the date of the wetlands determination shown on the plan for the record. But other than that, we're good.
All right. Thanks, Scott. At this point, give an opportunity for the applicants to come forward and identify your name and address, and any additional comments that you wish to offer at this point.
Casey Peters with DNK Engineered, representing the owner tonight. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity. And, you know, there's really nothing else I can add. Aside from Tricia, you know, had to say here about Canona, that about 40% of the cars on the road today in the U.S. have a Canona part in them. So they're continuing to grow, and they're going to bring some jobs, some new jobs to the community, and we're excited to be a part of it. So thank you, and we look forward to getting started. Our permit for, our application for DEQ, or Eagle, went in a couple of weeks ago, so it's in process. We had everything re-flagged with all the GPS markers on all the trees and all of that. So I appreciate you guys letting us submit for our building permit concurrently with what could be a four-month process for the DEQ. So we're working with PCI and Chuck, getting those, you know, we've got to do fire protection. We're getting our plans together and kind of poking him for information so that we submit a complete set when we do that as well. So that's about it, unless you guys have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you.
Now, this is not a public hearing, but on the other hand, if you are an adjacent property owner and wish to have any comments or questions concerning the project, you have an opportunity to come forward and give us your name and address and state your concerns. Okay, there being none, we'll go to deliberation amongst the commissioners. We've got a project description, recommendations from staff. Any comments?
I went up there the other day, and the parking lot was just full. Whatever you do, you're busy at it. The park place is full, isn't it? I was impressed. And I'm impressed at what our specialists say about you guys and everybody getting along, and it sounds like something we ought to go for. I didn't hear how many people are going to employ there.
Upwards of 67 when it's fully operational.
New employees?
Majority of them would be new. I think there's about 10 that are going to transfer over.
What would be the starting salary for somebody like that?
You know what? I don't know that. I'm not positive.
It's probably still going up, huh?
Yeah, yeah, it's moving target this week.
Thanks, Joe. There's no other discussion. Is there an offer for a motion?
I'll make a motion. Case number 22-004, Site Plan Review, motion to approve. I may move to approve the site plan for the 90,500-square-foot industrial building with mezzanine office area and related site improvements for Canona Industries. Per the site plan, last revision dated 4/16/2022 at 3461 Wilson Drive Northwest, subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall address all the items outlined in the City Engineers' Report dated 4/15/2022. Number 2, the applicant shall obtain a permit from Eagle for the wetland impact and fill prior to moving any dirt on the site. Number 3, the applicant shall revise the sheet index to include all sheets within the plan set. Number 4, the applicant shall provide three sealed sets of civil engineered plans incorporating the recommended revisions to the Community Development Department prior to the issuance of a building permit. And number 5, the applicant may be required to provide a financial guarantee in the form of a letter of credit or cash escrow deposit to ensure the quality completion of site-related items, such as landscaping, at the time of the building permit issuance.
One comment. The engineers' letters dated 4/12, not 4/15. So Scott's note was 4/12.
Well, she put 4/15.
I know, I know. Just make any question.
I knew you'd find something, Pat. There's probably more.
Okay, with that notation, is there support?
Support.
Support by Joe, with the motion by Tyler. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is case number 22-005. This is a public hearing. It's a final area site plan review for a lot within the West Town CPUD. And again, I'll look to Tricia Anderson, Planning Director, to introduce the project.
Thanks, Terry. So this project is for Heartland Dental. And this is a final area site plan review at 348 Wilson. And so the Planning Commission is being asked to review the final area site plan for a 4,230-square-foot dental office and to grant approval, whether without conditions, tabling or denial of the requests. This is a final area site plan review, as I mentioned. The lot size is approximately 1 acre. The zoning district is CPUD. It's within the West Town CPUD. This is, has a mixed-use, future land use designation, and it has a community character designation of neighborhood node. And the general location of the site is Lot C3 of the West Town CPUD. So this is the one that's situated between Culvers and Chick-fil-A. It's on the east side of Wilson Avenue, between West Town Service Drive and Lake Michigan Drive. And we have Mitchell Harvey with us tonight from Stonefield Engineering. So I just wanted to show the West Town PASP. You guys have seen this plan many times as these plans have come in for your review. And we are looking at Site C3 right here. So the proposed improvements associated with this plan include the 42, I'm sorry, 4,230-square-foot dental office with 10 patient rooms and two treatment rooms. They're proposing 37 standardized parking spaces, one loading space. They have a cross-access easement connecting with the Culvers Restaurant to the south. They're proposing some site lighting, landscaping, and they're also proposing a ground mount sign and also a masonry dumpster enclosure. Just a snapshot of the site plan here. They've got the office situated over in the northwest corner of the site. Down here is where you see the cross-access. They've got a full-service entrance drive on this side, several parking spaces, parking lot islands, sidewalks along Lake, I'm sorry, Wilson. And they also have, they have that service drive kind of cutting right through the west side of the parcel. There is not, so this says future cross-access, but it's not actually going to be, there probably won't be a cross-access there. Because first of all, I don't think the easement crosses over into the Chick-fil-A site. And if it does, then it's over here somewhere, I think is where we figured. But this right here is the Chick-fil-A dumpster, so this is not going to be a viable cross-access area. And this is their landscaping plan. I'm going to go, I'm going to skip over this one and go to off-street loading and parking. So I'll also talk about the dumpster, since I have this image here. One of the items that we had, that I had detailed in my staff report was regarding the location of the loading space, and then also the location of this dumpster, and how we see that there might be a little bit of a conflict here. Scott mentioned to me that most garbage trucks are front-loading now, so that might ease this issue a little bit. But there is potential for any garbage truck to block this cross-access. And while it's probably only once a week when the trash comes to pick up the dumpster, it's going to be that one time that somebody contacts the city and says, "Who approved this plan?" This garbage truck is blocking every time I have to get into Heartland Dental after I finish my fish sandwich over here at Culvers. So not only that, but the loading space location, originally, they had it proposed over in, within the parking lot, adjacent to, like immediately adjacent to the building near the northern property line. We've worked with Stonefield on a number of projects, and they typically like to add to the plan that the loading zone will, or the loading will take place on off-hours. But we all know that buildings and sites change ownership, change hands, change use. And so a loading zone that's taking up parking spaces with the promise that it will only occur in, on the off-hours is not going to work. This is a PUD, so we do have some flexibility when it comes to the configuration of the site. But we have an off-street parking and loading ordinance. And it does say that the loading zone should be adjacent to the opening used for loading and unloading in order to avoid interference with public use of highways, streets, or alleys. So while we're looking at a dental office, and I'll just go back to the site plan here. It's a dental office. They're probably not going to receive a high amount of deliveries. I don't even know what would be delivered to a dental office other than, you know, equipment used for the day-to-day patient care. But again, I'm going to go back to the fact that this might not always be a dental office, but this building will probably be here for a very long time, and so will this parking configuration and the loading zone. And so, going back to the dumpster location, so I've indicated that the dumpster pad protrudes into the drive aisle of the cross-access and of the parking lot. Could block access. If we're going to have somebody make a change, now is the time. Because we really only get one shot to get this right unless somebody comes in 20 years from now and wants to reconfigure the entire site. And so I also wanted to note that the number of parking spaces is 10 more than what's required. Our minimum number of parking spaces, I think, is 26 or 27. And they're proposing quite a bit more than what is needed. So, you know, in staff's opinion, I believe that if the site were reconfigured a little bit, by taking out some of the parking spaces, you would have more opportunity for placement of these items and not have any conflicts. So one other thing that I have brought up to the applicant that I feel like might be, not necessarily a conflict, but the building placement. I just wanted to mention that the other, the adjacent sites, the Chick-fil-A is at 38.5 feet from the Wilson right-of-way, and the Culvers is at 35 feet from the Wilson right-of-way. This one is proposed at 16.9 feet from the Wilson right-of-way. So do we have a requirement in the PUD to make all these buildings align? No. There is a front yard setback of 5 feet, which the building was originally proposed at. But again, I'm going to circle back to the fact that this is a PUD, and we do have some flexibility here, and the Planning Commission has the discretion to create conditions that the applicant would have to adhere to. So another thing I wanted to add, oops, let me go back here, is the lighting plan. I didn't see, so the, this whole area is shown as zero-foot candles, but there's a door here, so I would assume that maybe the, I don't know if this was maybe the photometric plan, not planning for that being the front wall. But it seems like you would have some wall pack lights here, and so this is something that's easy to fix. So getting to my recommendation, you know, we could do one of two things here. If the Planning Commission feels that some of these items are significant enough to warrant a tabling, meaning if it's the Planning Commission's desire to see some of these components of the site plan moved around, and it could cause the configuration to be completely different, and you wouldn't feel comfortable with staff handling that change, but instead you'd rather review it again after some changes have been made, you can table it. But if you are satisfied with the way the site is laid out, you know, there's, you could easily see this site in a number of lights. You know, there's the planner's eye, which is what I've been looking at the site under. There's the engineer's eye. And then there's also just, you know, Joe going to the dentist, and not necessarily this Joe, but, is it really that big of a deal that the loading space is over in that corner and it's not right next to the opening? We do have the flexibility to approve it away from the opening. And then, you know, same thing with the dumpster and the building location. I would like to see some additional landscaping. Right now, there's only about a 5-foot space for some small shrubs to be added along Wilson. And so I've provided you with two suggested motions, one for approval. If you do feel inclined to provide an approval tonight, I would recommend that it be subject to the eight conditions that I've laid out in my report. But if you choose to table it, I would ask that you state your findings into the record. And I think I have given you some suggested findings, mainly being that the FASP being, whether or not it's within substantial compliance with the previously approved West Town PASP. So with that said, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Tricia. Commissioners, any comments on what's been presented thus far?
Well, I will speak up, I guess. I'm a little uncomfortable with all that access parking in the dumpstered site and the drop-off site. in the dumpstered site and the drop-off site or the loading dock. Building setback. I think there are, there's a lot of stuff there. I don't think staff should have to duke that out. I would be in favor of tabling, so we gotta cite this little closer.
Okay, any other comments?
I'd agree with Tom. The setback really bothers me, it's gonna stick out like a sore thumb. And this is gonna be there a very long time. Nobody just goes in and scrapes sites nowadays to move a building, so I, I don't like the setback, I don't, and I agree with the rest of what Tom said.
Okay, well, we'll take those comments into consideration. We still have a CDI Engineers' Report and CDI, get Scott's perspective on the project as well.
Thank you. So, I apologize, we've got a few more comments than we would normally have. I, I think this is another casualty of COVID with doing a lot of these site plan review meetings via Zoom. We just aren't hitting all the points as accurately as we'd like, I think, between the, the developers and, and our, and our reviews. So, Tricia did mention that there's a small building shown on the site plan to the north. It's actually the dumpster, and it does pretty much eliminate the potential for cross-access there. That was something that we really wanted to try to get, but I think when Chick-fil-A came in, everyone's eyes turned into chicken biscuits, and we, we, we backed off on a few things, and this was one of them. And I think with the Ring Road the way it is, we didn't lose much with that. It's got really good interior access, and that's a very good thing. We also asked for some additional dimensions on the driveways. That's really to kind of make sure that truck-turning movements work and things like that. Those still need to be added to the plan. We, we asked a question about maintenance responsibility. And if you've noticed, as we worked, worked on the site plans in this development, a lot of the site plans actually cover the Ring Road. And so we wanna make sure that there's one party, one underlying party that's responsible for that maintenance, for both the storm sewer system, and also for snow maintenance and road maintenance and things like that. So, we need to get that answered. On Sheet C6, similar to what we saw in Chick-fil-A, there's, or actually it was a, a site to the south, I believe, but they need to get onto the site adjacent to them to get power. So, there's a pole shown there, and there's no easement. So, there has to be an easement. Just getting approval here doesn't mean that we're granting them permission to trespass. They have to get that approval with Consumers Energy via an easement and their neighbor. There's some conflicting information on the, on the plan. If you look at Detail 6 on C9, it shows Parking Spot 17 and a half, half-feet deep, and the site plan shows 18, so just another item that needs to be cleaned up. And then, one of the more important items for us, we asked that the, the standard DDA sidewalk detail be shown on the plan. And if you remember, that's a six-by-six square that's tooled kind of in a cool way, where it's, it's three-by-three squares, a little bit aesthetic. And certainly, we wanna make sure that that's adhered to in the right-of-way. So, if it's not shown on the plan, what happens a lot of times is the concrete guy goes out there and sees their standard detail and builds it to that. So, it's important to us that that's on the plan. That's it for us.
Okay, again, any comments, questions on the Engineers' Report? Okay, seen none? Now, the applicant, this is an opportunity for you to come forward, and name, address, and anything you'd like to add.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Mitchell Harvey with Stonefield Engineering, 607 Shelby Street, Detroit, Michigan. Tricia and Mr. Connors always do such a great job of explaining the site, so I won't go through it in too much detail. But, we are proposing a 4,230-square-foot dental office with 36 associated parking spaces. Primary access to the site would be off of the Ring Road, and then there is an additional cross-access to the south, south of the Culvers. So, to touch on some of the comments that were brought up, I think the big one is building placement, because that will kind of shift how the site lays out. So, I, I brought an exhibit. I was finally able to, it'll be the first page of this PDF. We were able to get an updated... Oh, you're good. So, we were finally able to get an updated aerial of this whole PUD as it develops. And, you know, I know, I know that our building is pushed a little bit closer to the road, but I wanted to set the stage for kind of how this area is developing, and really, the difference between our site and some of our neighbors to the, the north, which is Chick-fil-A, and to the south, with, which is the Culvers. So, as you can see, that red line that I've shown on here, that is just our building line extended north, extended south. The Chick-fil-A to the north, now their, their building facade is setback, but they do have that overhang canopy that extends out, which is actually closer to the right-of-way than ours. Now, it's not a building, but it is a, you know, a, kind of a, a permanent structure. So, I'd like to point that out. And then I'd also like to point out the Culvers to the south. Now, granted that they are, they are setback a little bit further than us, they are actually on the south side of the site. So, I believe that horizontal, that, that north-south spacing between our site as, and the Culvers will kind of soften the impact of how close our, our building is to the road. And, you know, I, you know, when I, when I scaled this image in and looked at it, you know, I knew we were close to the road, but it really does seem like it is in line with the other commercial developments up and down the road. So, with that being said, the reasoning we can't push this building back and just eat into those parking spaces that are directly to the east of the proposed dental office is that is the main entrance to the building. This dental office, it's a Heartland Dental. One of their top priorities is front-of-building parking. They wanna have customers or guests visiting to be able to come directly into the building. They don't wanna have to walk through a parking lot unnecessarily. So, that is really why we, we gotta kind of hold to our, our current setback, is to maintain those spaces right across the front there. Regarding loading, you know, obviously, if we could, if we didn't need a loading zone, we wouldn't have one. Besides the initial move-in for the dental office, they rely on UPS deliveries, you know, once or twice a week. It's not like they're delivering pallets of dog food or groceries. It's, you know, Amazon delivery trucks, that kind of stuff. Really a low, a low-loading generator. But, you know, we're willing to work with staff on finding a location that works for, for both parties on, on where that designated loading zone should go, that kind of, you know, meets both, both uses. The dumpster location, again, I'd just like to say we're flexible here. One thing I would like to point out is, you know, dental offices are inherently a low, a low-trash generator. And when there is trash pickup, someone leaving the Culvers still has the option to take a right, enter the Ring Road, and then come in through our entrance that would be on the Ring Road. So, you know, in the very few opportunities that there is trash pickup, we don't believe it would hinder any, there wouldn't be any traffic buildup. People would be able to take a turn, go out of the Ring Road and come in. And, again, I'd just like, like to say, it's a dental office, that, you know, there's not gonna be a significant demand for daily, twice, three-times-weekly trash pickup. It's gonna be a very, very low-trash generator. So, all the other comments, we are agreeable to. I think the big one that we would just like to, you know, reiterate is that, is that building placement. And, you know, I'd just like to reference our exhibit again, showing that, you know, it's not gonna be overly intrusive to the corridor there. So, with that, I'd like to thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Question, is there a reason you picked that spot for the dumpster?
We, we really thought it was far, far away from the building as possible, generally. You know, commercial users like this don't like to have a dumpster next to their building, or really even close to their main entrance. We looked at this site a bunch of different ways. I frankly don't see a better location that is, you know, conducive to the site. But, if, you know, if, you know, staff would like to move it closer to the building, we can do that. But, you know, we, you know, we design a lot of these, a lot of dental offices, a lot of medical offices, and really, all of them, we try to push that dumpster, you know, as far away as possible just to be less intrusive to guests coming in to get their teeth cleaned.
Is there a reason you wanna face the Ring Road and not face the parking lot? Because I was looking at it as, if you have the opening to the, to the location that faces the parking lot, push it away from Wilson Avenue and put your dumpster up closer to the Chick-fil-A dumpster up in that corner as an option. But, that's just me thinking out loud.
Yeah, we looked at it, and I, I think the floor plan is attached in the architectural plans. And they kind of have a specific way they orientate the site, where they have, you have your, you know, your waiting area, then you're seen by a, you know, an admin, and then you're taken back to the various treatment areas. So, that was, that's, that's their layout. They, they kind of lay it out in more of a long way as opposed to a wide way. I think, is it not longer in one dimension? Because if that is not the case, then I, I misspoke. 70 by 58, so it is, you know...
Because we did talk about the excess parking spaces, so you could take out eight to 10 parking spots.
Yeah, and I mean, we're willing to lose a couple to make it work. It's, it's one of those things, it's tenant, tenant demand, is, you know, they don't wanna be underparked here. I think, you know, they're, they're fine going to, I think we're at 36, they're fine going to 33 or whatever it may take, but, you know, going down to the absolute minimum of 26 is, is just too low for them. And I've, and I've made arguments saying we have plenty of parking for a restaurant every single time. So, you know, it was their, it was their request, and they're pretty firm on, you know, having that 33 to 36 parking. That's, that's really what they look for in a site.
Okay, any other questions?
Tell us about Heartland Dental.
It, Heartland Dental is, it's just your typical dental office. There's no, you know, it's, it's, it's a chain. You know, they specialize teeth cleaning. I don't really know too much about the interior operations, it's just their normal dental office.
I mean, it's a chain, did I hear you say that?
Yeah, it is a chain.
Okay. Now, I went to dental school for a little while, so I know a little bit about this. But, don't we usually talk about dental chairs? How much, how many you have instead of treatment rooms and stuff like that?
Yeah, and I think we do show chairs on here, the, the floor plan.
Pardon?
There, there are chairs on the floor plan. You know, each, each room has a chair in it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm not too well-versed in dental school, so you got me at a loss there.
At this point, thank you for coming forward. This is a public hearing, and I'd like to solicit a motion for opening a public hearing. Motion by Jason, supported by Scott to open a public hearing. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Public hearing's open. If there's anyone out in the audience that has any questions or concerns concerning this project, please come forward with your, give us your name and address.
My name is Jim Giraj. I live at 704 Comer Court, Grand Rapids side of the golf course. I like the idea that Mr. Laurie had actually stated about taking the building and simply flipping it this way, so the entrance is on the south. Again, the setback, and I don't know exactly the right-of-way. So, from the street to the beginning of the west side of the sidewalk, if the sidewalk's six feet, and then the building is 16 feet from there, as opposed to twice that distance from the other two buildings, yeah, it will stick out like a sore thumb. Also, the sidewalk, I'm assuming it continues down Wilson? And that's what you're talking about, six-by-six squares? Yes? And that's gonna be a different aggregate than just a regular cement? Concrete, okay. So, no problem with maintenance, with running a little bobcat through there, whatever? Because Stan, because Walker actually cleans sidewalks through the Public Works Department, correct?
I'm asking you if I can answer, I guess, to be polite here.
Go ahead, yes.
Okay, yes. We have a, we have some special equipment that's used out in the DDA to take care of that. And it, it does take a little bit more attention, because it's grooved, but it's an aesthetic, and it, it kind of helps with the identity for the DDA.
Okay, but again, if north or north and south of that single building is straight concrete, and you're gonna have this one little section of pretty sidewalk, again, maintenance item. My, you know, just my thought. And, as you said about the dumpster, if I were a maintenance person within that building, I would not have to walk way out to that other corner. I would like to exit that building and go right there next to the dumpster, which is lining up with Chick-fil-A dumpster. It all seems like common sense there. And the building is what, 12 feet in difference? You got so many parking spots to play with. And, the other thing about the dumpster, again, front-end trash pickup. You gotta go backwards. You just wanna be careful about parking spots and such, so they have a clear path, nobody's car gets damaged, et cetera, et cetera. Just a couple of things to throw out there, so, make you think.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments wish to offer? Okay, seen none? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Pat.
Support.
Supported by Scott to close the public hearing. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Commissioners, I guess Scott?
I'll start. I'm just gonna kind of piggyback off of Tom and Tyler's comments regarding the dumpster. I have concerns about that and the right-of-way and cross-access setback as well. I just think there's too many outstanding issues to warrant approval based on the plans that have been submitted. And I think they would need to come back, clean that up, and see what they can come up with before anything's approved, from my perspective.
Ditto, basically. I'd just like to see the building pushed back, just to kind of make it look, that corner's gonna be an important corner, and I'd like to have it done right and look right from the start, so.
I pretty much agree with Scott and Pat. Looking at the dumpster, though, I, I don't know that I see a better spot for it. It has easy access for the trucks to come in, get it, and get out. So, that's where I'm at. Pretty much in agreement with the statements been made. Mark, I think you're, you gotta raise a good point as far as accessibility. It's just a matter of how do you balance out those competing concerns there?
Just to get changed around a little bit. In terms of the doc, or the dumpster being as far away, I would try to put it up to the north side, but I understand why they're doing it on the south side. I, I agree with Pat, that maybe turning it would look a little better, and pushing it off from the line would change that. Certainly a project that I'm in favor of being here, just needs a little tweak.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Tricia said in the very beginning. There's, I, I think these are things we can fix, aren't they? I mean, this isn't major stuff, yeah. I, I agree with everybody else, yes.
I haven't changed my opinion, I still think it needs to be tabled.
Okay. It's your pleasure, then. Me? Again?
I'll make a motion, I'm, I move to the table. The approval, approval for final site plan for forty-two thirty square foot dental office and related site improvements per the plan set last revised dated four six twenty twenty-two, located at three forty-eight Wilson Avenue Northwest, Lot Three of the West Town CPUD, based on the following findings. The plan revisions are recommended, as recommended in the planning director's report dated April eighth twenty twenty-two, are significant in nature and should be further reviewed by the planning commission after revisions have been made.
Support. Yep. Motion by Tyler, supported by Mark to, uh, to table the request as, as noted. If there's no other questions, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And, uh, work with, uh, Tricia as far as, uh, the timing of the resubmital and the subsequent, uh, hearing. Thank you. All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is case number twenty-one dash zero three zero. This is a public hearing, uh, final area site plan review, and look to Tricia to introduce the request.
Thank you, Terry. I assume this is the reason all the people are in the room tonight. This, this project is called the Savannah at Waterford Village, and this is, um, a final area site plan review, and the project location is at thirty-four sixty-one Lake Michigan Drive. Um, so just the parcel summary, um, the lot size is fifty-two point seven nine acres. The zoning district is RPUD two. Future land use is residential growth, four to, four to eight units per acre. The general location of the project site is on the south side of Lake Michigan Drive between Cummings Avenue, nope, that, sorry, that's a carryover from a different, um, that's a typo. Pat, did you find that one? So, no, this is on the north side of Lake Michigan Drive, between Maynard and Cummings. So we have, um, our applicant, Rick Kavanaugh and Anthony Rodriguez of Stonely Companies, and I believe Anthony is here tonight. Um, and we also have Drew Walker, engineer from Kimley Horn, who's also with us tonight. Um, and before I get into the review, I just wanted to show you this slide. I've been, this is kind of a carryover slide that I've had every time we have one of these public hearings, and, um, I think it's important for folks to, um, have a good understanding of what the process looks like and where, where we've gotten already and, um, what we have to do yet. So, as far as the overall PUD, we've, um, the applicant has already gone through the rezone process, um, gone to the planning commission for the recommendation there, and they've gone to the city commission, um, for the first and second reading of the rezone. Um, then they went back to the planning commission for the PASP, um, so that's been approved. The PASP, remember, is the overall PUD development plan for the whole entire parcel, and they proposed three different zoning districts, CPUD, RPUD one, which is the single family, and RPUD two, which is the multifamily component. We're here tonight for the final area site plan for the multifamily portion of this PUD development. And this is a one-stop at the planning commission for this particular development. It's got a different, um, approval path than, than the other pieces within that, um, overall PUD development. Um, and so, I'll just, um, I'll get into some of the items that we're reviewing as part of, uh, the final area site plan. Um, so as I said, the, the zoning is already in place for the PASP, the change has been made on the map, um, the property splits have, have taken place, the county map, uh, reflects, um, those three different zoning districts being split out from one another. Um, so on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, city commission approved that rezoning, and the PASP was approved on September first, twenty twenty-one. So, again, the next step in this process is the more in-depth review of the development proposals, um, through the FASP review process. And so some of you guys might remember the items that, yeah, there, there's items that get locked into the PUD, so these are all of our minimums. And then when we're, when we're reviewing the, the FASP, we're looking at the plan to make sure that all the minimums and all the things that were approved with the PASP have been met or drawn in accordance with what was approved in the PASP. So these things would be the specific dimensions, so things like, um, minimum building separation, minimum driveway length, um, minimum setback from the project limits. Um, so we're looking at those specific dimensions for, for this review. Um, we're looking at the layout to make sure that the layout of the roads, um, and the configuration of the different buildings are roughly the same as what they, um, were approved in the PASP. Um, and we're also taking a closer look at all the sidewalks and whether or not those sidewalks connect to other sidewalks to create a unified, um, pedestrian-friendly, walkable neighborhood. We're also looking at landscaping specifics, like the species, the size, the number of plantings, the location of specific plantings. And we're looking at lighting, and lighting is, um, one of those things where we have a photometric plan. You probably remember me showing a photometric plan from the last, um, project, where we're able to see, um, how far your light is going to go onto, um, the subject property and what we want, you know, what we're looking at is we want to avoid light spill onto adjacent properties. Um, we're also reviewing stormwater management, and for this one, this is a really big piece, and this is, this is one of the things that has, um, caused us to wait this long between the PASP approval and where we are right now, because we've, um, taken a really big deep dive into, um, the stormwater and the drainage there. Um, we're also reviewing roads and utilities that will serve this development. Um, we also ask for signage details at this, uh, stage of, of the review process. And we also want the developer to put a purpose to the open space in accordance with what was approved at the, um, when the PASP was approved. So this is the overall PUD here, and again, we're just looking at the final area site plan for this area shown in pink. Um, and, um, we, the developer has broken this, um, this piece up into two phases essentially. So it's the multifamily development in, in that neighborhood, um, which we have identified as phase one. So these are the things, the, the things within this pink area is what's going to come first. Um, and then within this blue area, you'll notice these roads, and I also have another graphic associated with more detail for phase two, but this is essentially, um, the reroute of that, um, Lincoln Lawns Drive to line up with Sunset Hills, the construction of this Savannah Drive that runs through the, the commercial PUD. Um, and then also the signal down here, the cul-de-sac of Lincoln Lawns Drive. So we've got two phases, one is mostly infrastructure and the other one is the actual units themselves. So the infrastructure, there is infrastructure, um, proposed as part of phase one, which would serve the multifamily units. So the main access road, the road that's, um, been called Waterford Village Drive, um, that will be constructed all the way up to Marlboro, and I'll just back up to this picture here. So where, where Marlboro Street, um, is extended here and right before it goes north to serve the single family, um, this is how far this road will be constructed as part of phase one. Um, and then, so I just mentioned this, the new road connection from Marlboro Street to Waterford Village Drive, and then we also have all the stormwater and infrastructure and utilities for the multifamily development that will serve those units directly. So the neighborhood portion of phase one, that was, remember that area shown in pink? That is going to be, um, you know, basically the proposed improvements for this, for this area. So we're looking at two hundred and fifty total units with a mix of, um, building and unit types, and over here in, here's a snapshot from the plan, um, they're showing a hundred and twenty-eight one, one-bedroom units, one hundred two-bedroom units, twenty-two three-bedroom units, with a total of two hundred and fifty, and that works out to be six point seven four units per acre, which is another thing that's in line with our master plan and with the, um, preliminary area site plan or PASP, um, because the, the goal is to be between four and eight units per acre, so we're still there. Um, they're also proposing all of the unit landscaping and the site landscaping and the buffering landscaping. So the unit landscaping is all of the, um, plantings that will go immediately out in front of the units and around the units. Um, the site landscaping is going to be, um, trees and shrubs and, um, other things sprinkled in within the interior of the development, so there's a lot of open space there. And then you've got the buffering, which is, um, the areas that, um, are adjacent to other residential areas, um, specifically Comer Court. That's going to be Comer Court and Hazelnut Drive, so that, that area there, um, is one of those buffer areas where, um, specific plantings are proposed to serve as a, um, buffer. They're also proposing some street lighting, um, as any neighborhood would, um, a five thousand two hundred and fifty-five square foot clubhouse to serve the residents of this community, um, nine hundred and eighty-nine off-street parking spaces, and this would include, um, parking spaces that are, uh, outside of driveway and garage parking locations. Um, so there's a few areas where, 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 um, guest parking is located throughout the development. Um, they're also proposing sidewalks and walking paths throughout the development, and then within some of those open areas, um, between and behind units, um, they, they have some, some amenities for gathering spaces within those areas. So going back to phase two of what's being proposed, this is, you might remember this graphic from, uh, the PASP, so this plan here might not be, um, exact as what we're looking at right now for the FASP, but I thought it would, nothing's changed here, so I thought it would be helpful to use this. So again, phase two is looking at the construction of this road, the alignment of this road with Sunset Hills down here, and also, um, ending this road in a cul-de-sac, which is a change because we know that, uh, Lincoln Lawns Drive comes out to Lake Michigan Drive around right here. And then the signal will be part of that as well, and I believe Scott is going to get into, um, a lot more detail when it comes to these infrastructure improvements associated with phase two. So now I'm going to get into, um, some of the issues and the variations from the PASP that, that I've picked up while, while doing review of my, um, of the plan set that was submitted. So the first thing, um, the first thing that I looked at when reviewing this plan was, um, the sidewalks. Um, one of the things that was approved as part of the PASP was sidewalks on at least one side of every street, twenty-two foot driveway lengths to account for, um, long trucks being parked and not hanging over the sidewalk, and also, um, having those sidewalks connected to other sidewalks. And so I've, I've noticed that, um, there are some areas, and I have a couple images in here, there were some areas that, that didn't have sidewalks, and so some of the buildings kind of looked like they were on their own little island, um, without any actual refuge from, from the road. And these are all private roads or private streets or alleys, maybe? Um, I can't remember exactly what they're, what they're being referred to, but we just know that they're not public roads. And so what that means is that they're twenty-six feet wide, and we'd like to be able to, um, have a spot for individuals who walk out, who walk out of their units and, um, you know, let, just picture our Michigan winters and having to walk through snow piles without walking on a, on a plowed sidewalk, and having to walk through that, that narrow, um, private alleyway when there's like a UPS truck coming or, um, you know, a large truck or a garbage truck or something like that. So we've, we've communicated this issue to the applicant, um, and in a little bit here, they're prepared to offer up a, a solution, um, to this. So they've essentially taken all the, all the areas into consideration where there should be sidewalks that I've pointed out, and I think they've also taken a really close look at the plan to find where, where their sidewalks are lacking, um, and should be placed and should also connect to other areas. And this plays into the driveway thing because, um, you know, this is a five-foot sidewalk and in some areas, there might not be enough space to push the building, the whole entire building this way or that, in order to, um, make that five-foot adjustment, um, and still keep a twenty-two foot driveway length. So some of these items may have a domino effect, um, on other items. So the driveway lengths, I pretty much just touched on that. We, we have looked at to make sure that every driveway within the development is either twenty-two feet from the face of the building to the edge of the sidewalk, or if it's a building that doesn't have a sidewalk that goes along the front, we've asked that it's twenty-two feet from the building front to that pavement edge of the alleyway. And so, you know, there was one area that I saw marked as twenty feet, communicated that with the applicant, um, who pointed out that that might be a typo. And so I, I feel like they might be prepared to address that. Another, another item that is different from the plant, the PASP is several units that are being proposed without garages. So this is the approved PASP, this image here, and you can see each unit has, uh, has its own private garage, uh, to stall, I believe. And so, um, you know, in working with the applicant and ha, you know, talking through this whole twenty-two foot driveway length and how, you know, if we had it our way, it'd be twenty-five feet, um, but we settled on twenty-two, that was approved in the PASP. One of their solutions was, um, the potential to remove some of the, uh, garages from some of these units. So, um, I think we were under the impression that it would only be a few buildings, but since it is ten buildings that, um, will not have garages, I feel like that's significant enough to bring that up to the planning commission to talk about any adverse impacts that might have on, um, the character of the neighborhood and whether or not that strays from the original intent of, of the PASP that was approved. So that's something that the planning commission is going to have to deliberate, deliberate on, um, you know, there's, for all of us that have garages... You know, there's, for all of us that have garages, if we imagine if we didn't have garages, what we would do with all of our stuff? That's, you know, the first thing that, that comes to my mind. Especially, you know, if you have little kids like I do and they have their toys and all their scooters and their other things, where are those going to go? So, you know, we're looking at that stuff. We're looking at, you know, if, if trash is going to be on a, you know, like the individual carts for each unit, where will trash, where will trash receptacles go? So things, things like that. And I understand that, I believe all of the buildings that are proposed with no garages are, are one-bedroom units. So, you know, the Planning Commission will have to talk about whether or not they think that could have an impact on, on some of the other units, or if, or if they're comfortable with it. But it's my job to just highlight that. Another thing that I've added in my staff report is some areas where I feel like there's probably some gaps in the landscaping. If, if you've gone out to, if you've gone out to Comer Court and Hazelnut Drive and you look where there used to be a nice, beautiful view of the golf course and all of those trees. Some folks might be excited to see apartments in their backyard. Maybe, maybe not all. But I've identified some areas that likely have some gaps that will need to be filled with some plantings, just to aid in that screening. When you look at this plan, you see that there's a lot, a big, heavy vegetative buffer that exists between, you know, that residential neighborhood and the golf course. And that is there, like you can see how there's a lot of big, old, mature trees in there. But I, I feel that some evergreens and some, some species of trees that could provide a little bit more screening would be helpful in just kind of creating more of a buffer there. Because as you can see here from Hazelnut Drive, you can see between these two big, old deciduous trees, there's a big gap there. And there's gaps here, and there's gaps here. Do we have to block the view completely from the neighbors on Comer Court and Hazelnut Drive? No, but as a good neighbor within the apartments, I feel that adding some more plantings along that property line would just be beneficial. And then preservation of existing trees. I know that was one item that was talked about extensively. And there's a lot of trees that are on this golf course that I think some people in this room might have a real connection to. And I get that because I'm a tree hugger myself. And, you know, you've got trees that you've looked at for 25 years or however long you've lived in your house. And seeing some of those trees go just really kind of breaks your heart. And so we have worked with the developer trying to save as many trees as physically possible when it comes to, you know, designing the layout and the configuration of the units and the roads and all that. So I just wanted to point out the one place where I saw, I know there's like a, there's a big willow tree here. So this is the, this side, the left side, is the approved PASP that calls out a lot of the existing trees, existing trees to remain. So there's kind of a little conglomerate of trees here. I've looked on the aerial photos and I've been able to see a big willow tree and some other like, you know, evergreens. And so I just wanted some clarification from the applicant as to whether or not it's, the plan is to remove these and just replace with some, some other evergreens? Or if this is just kind of like a placeholder, like we're, we, there's trees here? This is the landscape plan from the final area site plan that we're reviewing. And so I just wanted some clarification as to, are you taking these down and planting the three Siberian spruce? Or are these proposed to stay here and these will be added to that? So just a little bit of clarification on that item is what we're asking. And then lastly, I have other items. And these other items are just, you know, really easy items to fix. You know, I've pointed out a couple of areas that might have a typo or the dimension looks weird. And I've, you know, let Drew know that this will need to be revised. We also need the plans to be sealed. The plan set should also contain an updated construction schedule. We've gotten a construction schedule from the developer, but that was when they first applied, back in like October, November of last year. So I'm sure that's changed now with having to line things up in a different, in a different timeframe. So we'll need an updated schedule there. We'd also like to see rear-to-rear building dimensions. Dimensions for the mail kiosk and the maintenance shed. And then we have a building dimension between 11 and 12 that looks kind of weird because it's not really touching anything. And then that building 23 on the plan is where I saw a 20-foot driveway length. And so we'd like to just make sure that all those items get addressed. So before I launch into my recommendation, we've got these criteria that we look at every time we go to, and, and these guys make a motion and they have to list their findings. And so the findings are essentially straight out of the ordinance. And the Planning Commission has to decide whether they, whether, whether they do or do not meet these criteria. And they, they go through this list every time we have a final area site plan. And so I've listed out these findings. And if the Planning Commission, so I should back up. My recommendation is for the Planning Commission to approve the, the final area site plan for the Savannah at Walker. But if they find that some of these criteria have not been met, for example, the fire, final area site plan for Savannah at Walker either is or is not in substantial compliance with the previously approved preliminary area site plan for the Waterford Village RPOD-2. That relates to the units without garages. So if, if you find that it still is in substantial compliance, so substantial compliance is a little bit vague, but because you can't, you're, you're not really going to measure substantial, right? So the Planning Commission will have to decide if the fact that they don't have, 10 buildings do not have garages, if it's still considered in substantial compliance. And then the other one that I have highlighted here is the Savannah at Walker, I'm sorry, Savannah at Waterford Village Multifamily Development will or will not be designed, constructed, and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity and shall not change the essential character of the area in which it's proposed. So this is something that ties into the fact that, that 10 buildings could not have garages. And if the external effects of not having an area to store certain things, whether or not that would be met. So again, I am recommending the approval for this final area site plan. I've got about 100 conditions. So I'm not going to read through all of these unless you would like me to. Yes, you would like me to? Okay. Yep, okay. So the, the approval, if the Planning Commission is inclined to provide an approval here for this final area site plan, staff recommends that it be subject to all of these conditions. So I'll go each, go through each one. The items included herein as conditions of approval as well as the financial obligations of the developer for off-site improvements shall be incorporated into a development agreement or memorandum of understanding that will be drafted by the city manager's office with review by the city attorney and recorded once the terms are finalized. The second one, the timing of the construction of Phase Two improvements will be in accordance with the terms of the development agreement or memorandum of understanding. The applicant shall address all the items outlined in the city engineer's report dated 4/13/2022. The applicant may be required to provide a financial guarantee in the form of a letter of credit or cash escrow deposit to ensure the quality completion of site-related items such as landscaping at the time of building permit issuance. The applicant shall address the other items that are listed in my report prior to the issuance of any building permits. The applicant shall address issues noted in this report related to pedestrian connectivity and add sidewalk connections were recommended by staff in a revised site layout. The applicant shall revise the site RPOD site data to reflect the correct zoning district of the subject site, which is RPOD-2. The applicant shall draft a preservation easement document for review by the city attorney prior to recording. And the finalized document shall be recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits. The applicant shall work with staff on an acceptable landscape plan that must be submitted and approved before the issuance of any building permits for this phase of the development. And the applicant shall submit a revised lighting and photometric plan to further reduce illumination levels and light spilling onto the residential property across Waterford Village Drive to be reviewed and approved by staff prior to the issuance of any building permits. And lastly, the applicant shall provide three sealed sets of civil engineered plans, incorporating all of the recommended revisions and conditions of approval to the community develop, community development department prior to the issuance of any building permits for this phase of the development. And then I put a placeholder there for any added conditions the Planning Commission would see as appropriate.
Thank you, Tricia. Very good detail in terms of the analysis of the site plan review. At this point, are there any comments from the commissioner's discussion concerning these items? Okay, there being none at this point in time. Thank you, Tricia. And we'll turn it over to City Engineer Scott Conroy.
Sometimes I feel like I should be the opening act for these big PowerPoint presentations because nobody wants to hear any more talking after that. But I've got about three pages of notes there. You've all read it. I hate to go through it point by point, but there's a lot of good families and interested parties at home that are watching this as well. So I do think I should probably hit the high points as we move through there. So Tricia talked about the delay that we've seen. I think what we've tried to do is, is look at what are the fatal flaws? What are potential fatal flaws with the development? And make sure that we don't bring it back until we know those can be solved. And those two were traffic and drainage. So what I've done is I've given you a little bit of background about the Waterford Village, kind of following up on the PASP, and then some comments that are specific to the FASP for the apartment part. So as far as the follow-up goes, the traffic study is intact and is valid now. It's been submitted to MDOT, and MDOT has given it a tentative approval. That's not put in writing. As a practice, they don't like to do that until after the, the final plan is in place because there's tweaks and things that have to be changed. But they have approved the location of the traffic signal with some conditions. One of those conditions being that the Lincoln Lons Drive needs to be relocated east to match up with Sunset Hills. This isn't new, we've known that. But this kind of firms that up. They've also talked about the, the need that if a future development occurs on the south side of the road, that their main entrance should line up with the new signal. That's just good access management and something we would practice anyway. So we're all comfortable with that. And I think Tricia mentioned also the, the phases of how the, the public road part of this project would come into play. And we would want the, the main road, what's, what's shown here in, in pink, done first. And while that road's being built, we don't want to have all the different subcontractors that they would need to be building apartments driving on this partially-built road and crushing pipes and contaminating soils and that kind of thing. So they'll have to provide alternate access. But it's my understanding that they're going to work as quickly as they can to get at least the south part of that done and approved, so then they could start using it to access their site. So that might be something that happens. It might be that they don't build all of Phase One. They might build the, the southern 300 or 400 feet to completion, get it approved so they can use it and they have a good access point while they continue north of the public road. But once they get up there to, to Marlboro and get that tapped in, then they'll, they'll move down to the blue area and they'll, they'll work as carefully as they can to continue and allow access for the Lincoln Lons folks until there's a point where that access has to be adjusted so that the Lincoln Lons entrance can be moved. So that's going to be a delicate balance, but I think they've made a pledge to work with us and we've made a pledge to work with them too, as, as well as MDOT. When it comes to the drainage report, there's a comprehensive drainage report that has been submitted. I believe it was part of your packet. I wouldn't look too much into the details of that yet because some of those details are still being worked out, and it's 200 pages. So it might put you to sleep. Lots of calculations in there. But I think in general, what we've tried to do is maintain the tributary areas. So for example, most of the water in the golf course flows south to the Sexton Drain. There's a very small area at the northwest part that flows north into the Sunset Hills plat. So in the plat, the outlet is Kent County Drain Office-controlled. And to the south, it's Sexton Drain, which is also Kent County Drain Office-controlled. So they are a very active partner in our review and have been, we've met with them several times to talk through some issues. And we're getting to the point now where we feel like they're all achievable things that we're looking at. But it's important to remember, I think, that this development will capture all of its water and transport it to three different ponds. There's, if we, when we start to look at the single family, that'll go to Pond A, which is on the west side. We're not there yet, we're not ready to talk about that. We don't know what the real design's going to look like. Hopefully it looks like the PASP, but we're not sure. But what we can tell you now is that ponds B and C, which will handle a lot of the water from the apartment complex, those are going to be private, they're not going to be publicly maintained. They'll be maintained by the, the owners of the apartment complex and the developer. And that could be, that could take on a strange shape when it, when it includes the commercial property out front, whether they decide to retain that and lease it or sell it outright. Those ponds that service those private properties will be taken care of privately. So with the, with the, the biggest concern that I think we, we try to throw in a big development like this is when we look at pre-development flow and pre-development flood elevation compared to post-development flow and, and elevation. And so we require a statement that looks at the two, 10, 25, and 100-year storm events because that gives us kind of a nice, a graphic to look at essentially. And what they're going to be required to do, and what they are doing, is showing that with each of these storm intensities, the, the rate of flow leaving the site is less and the elevation of floodwaters in the area are, are at or below. And I think they've done a, a nice job of showing that they can reduce that with some of the new stormwater requirements that we have. One other item related to that drainage is that we've engaged Thomas Smith, who's a professional engineer on the east side of town. He's one of the region's experts. He has reviewed this in detail for us to give us some assistance with the 200-page component, all the detailed calculations. And he's getting pretty comfortable. There's only a handful of items that he's got left. And you saw, I think, I attached to our report here a list from Kent County Drain Commission that is much, much less than what we've had and what we've been working with over the last month. So we feel that those are all achievable. But some common points, I think, that maybe are worth bringing up related to the drainage. You know, we, we've talked about this before. We know that there's really poorly draining soils out here. You can see that in the neighborhood to the west where they don't have detention. They've got kind of a limited storm system and a lot of the backyards are wet. And with the clay, it just, it sits around. And there's not much you can do about that. And so these folks are going to have to take care of all of this water and also retain and protect the wetlands that are there. So they're, they're going to have to do that with extended detention because they can't put the water back in the ground very readily. That is part of our stormwater ordinance, and the Drain Office is comfortable with that. So that delicate balance is being maintained there. Another item that we've looked at that we're still debating is is they've got some rather large ponds that are flat. And what happens with that is the water sits in there and the dirt and the sediment settles out, which is great. But as soon as it settles out, it blocks the flow, which is bad. So we're having kind of a philosophical debate about that. And you folks can certainly chime in on that because I think that's a relative planning commission issue about how you feel about that. But I think the Drain Office has been pretty adamant that they would like to make sure there's drainage flow across those ponds. Being that they're private, I'm not sure if that can be a requirement from them or if it's a recommendation from them. It certainly is a good recommendation, though. I mentioned that Pond A would likely be a public pond in the future when the single-family development takes place. If that takes place in a traditional plat, which we think it probably will, then all those, all the drainage in there will be overseen by the Drain Office, and we kind of provide a secondary or supplemental review as we do with all other plats. And B and C are likely to be private ponds. And again, we're getting more and more comfortable with their configuration. If you could see throughout the process here, the changes, there've been a lot of changes with how those ponds sit in terms of whether they have one or two cells, their elevation, how they interact with the wetlands. That's all been looked at very critically. And we've actually had some discussions with Eagle about that as well. So the, so the team for the drainage review has really grown. On the south part of the site, one key item is that the Sexton Drain, which operates very poorly right now, is going to be completely reconstructed by this developer. So that's good for the city. It's good for MDOT with drainage along the road, and it's certainly good for the Drain Office. And so they'll be, they will be building a 36-inch concrete pipe that will work through their development. They've actually made some changes just recently here to make sure that the manholes are located in areas where they don't have to be very deep because the existing system is like 20 feet deep out there. And the last time repairs were made, it was a very big deal. So we want to make sure that's all very accessible. When it comes to the ponds, we want to make sure they have one foot of freeboard, which means that if they're full, they're not going to spill over the entire pond. We want to make sure that there's a spillway there to direct that flow in a safe location. That's something that they don't have right now, but we're working hard to make sure they get. It's probably going to require a couple of tweaks to make sure that that can happen. And then I mentioned the wetlands. We have one item in there that's a little bit unique and picky. Talks about a flare den section, D116, and it's located about four feet below the adjacent wetland. And that's maybe to illustrate the fact that what we're trying to do here is make sure that we don't artificially drain all those wetlands. That's an important part of the community. A lot of wildlife in there. So we want to probably have them raise that up so that it's retained, so that, so that we have zero impact on the wetlands. And that's important. Moving on to the Savannah Final Area Site Plan. Tricia mentioned the issue with the driveways. Again, I think it's important for us to point out that we still prefer the 25-footers. I think it was agreed upon last time that 22's okay. That doesn't necessarily mean that every development that's come in from here, here on, we're going to say 22's okay because 25 is really what gives you room for a, an SUV or a truck, traditional-sized truck, and still to be able to walk around the vehicle to get inside the house. So that's something we strive for and will continue to strive for. Along the main, along the main entrance here for Walker Village Drive, Waterford Village Drive, I'm sorry, adjacent to a retaining wall, we're going to need to see some fence or some guardrail or something like that. I'm sure Tom would have caught that if I didn't bring it up. But that's something that's purely FASP-related, and we want to make sure that it's considered here. And if there was to be a motion, then hopefully that would adopt my recommendations, and then that would be taken care of. And then related to sidewalk, we listed quite a few places here where there's not sidewalk between the buildings. And Tricia covered this in detail, so I don't want to beat it too much. But you know, when you think about the dumpsters, they're all going to have individual dumpsters that are going to be rolled out. When you think about the snow and how's the snow going to be moved around, it's important to have a safe place for people to walk through these developments. And hopefully, they have some, some ways to accommodate that. So again, this list seems kind of long, but we've worked through a lot of very difficult issues. If you decide to move forward tonight, I would recommend that you consider adding the Kent County Drain Commission approval as a condition of that approval because it's important that we don't lose sight of their oversight here. And then additional condition I think that you should consider is to allow modifications to the road in terms of acceleration lanes, deceleration lanes, turn lanes. You know, some of that stuff is still in a state of flux. We feel really good about what we have, but there's liable to be a couple of tweaks as we move forward. So if you could direct that to staff, I think that would allow us to make minor changes and make sure that both MDOT and the city are happy with how that works out. So thanks for being patient. And one more thing I should add, too. There's a whole process for public plan review that hasn't started yet. And that is when they give us what we call plan and profile sheets for the public roads so that we can see how the sanitary sewer's going to fit with the water mains, going to fit with the storm sewer, and all of the curb elevations and the vertical curves and horizontal curves. All that is yet to come if this moves forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Scott. Any comments or questions concerning Scott's report?
Scott, I just have one question. In the apartment side, who maintains, who's going to take over maintenance of the road? Does that, does the city of Walker take that over? Or is that on the, on the developer?
What we've called the spine road, which would be Waterford Village Drive on the left, on the west side of the apartments. That would be public, but everything interior to the apartments would be private.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, now is an opportunity for the developer group to come forward and identify yourself and opportunity to offer comments concerning the project.
Anthony Rodriguez with Stonely Companies, 760 West Main Street in Barrington, Illinois. Representative of the developer, the development and manager with Stonely. I also have Drew Walker with me with Kimley Horn. Drew will touch on, you know, a significant amount of points on the drainage, traffic circulation, and some of the sidewalk issues. But a few points I wanted to bring to light. But before I do, Tricia and Scott, you know, thanks for your continued patience with us. It's been a long road. We feel like we've, you know, adhered to a lot of the, you know, comments by the planning commission, the city commission, the general public, which has been vocal. You know, we think we have a good plan in place as it stands today. And you know, there's a few modifications that we'll talk about and we'll represent. But we feel we're in a good stage, and we're eager to get started on this. I'd just like to touch on a few points. Tricia's report and Scott's obviously was, you know, to a T. Tricia, if you can go back just to, actually, do you have any of the renderings of our buildings? That package at all? I wanted to touch on, the biggest thing from the PASP to the FASP is the one-bedroom units without garages. There's a few points that go into that. It's not just that, you know, we needed to adhere to driveway lengths. There's a few things, you know, the timing of when we originally had PASP to now, as I'm sure you're aware, we've, you know, incurred significant pricing pressure. You know, it's all around us. So what we're doing and what we've, you know, kind of differentiated our product now is that we can offer one-bedroom units without garages. We can also offer one-bedroom units with garages. When you look at your typical garden-style multifamily communities, not all have, you know, direct access garages or garages on-site. Your typical apartment renter usually has less stuff than a typical homeowner would. So that's kind of our, our point here is that we could take, you know, roughly 20% of our units, you know, in strategic locations. You'll see there's, there's site parking around that to accommodate what we've kind of removed with the garages. But we've, we've taken these buildings, and now we're able to, you know, differentiate our unit mix. We're able to accommodate a lesser average monthly rent because we're not having a garage. You know, there'll be a significant amount of, you know, empty nesters or, you know, people that are traveling, you know, to and from Grand Valley State that don't have many belongings. So they don't need much space. So we've kind of gone down that path. You know, another thing, your typical garage, two-car garage probably costs, on average, $30,000 to $40,000 a unit. So, you know, we're able to make this development work because of the pricing pressures that we've seen by removing some of these garages. It makes the deal more feasible. So that, that's one thing I wanted to point out, at least. Tricia, if you could just go to the, the. Oh, yeah, if you could throw, there's something on the. Yeah. Do you move?
Can you see the screen over there?
Yeah, so yeah, unfortunately, it's not in color. I do have a color.
This is in color, the screen is not.
Okay. But this, this is what your typical one-bedroom unit, which is roughly 890 square feet, would look like without a garage. You know, so you'll see that, you know, there's, there's obviously, we're adhering to the driveway lengths. You know, your typical family-style car, you know, fits in the driveways. But it, I wish it was in color. It's a good-looking building, and it fits well in the community as far as, you know, the residential aspect. Yes, yes, as Drew's pointing out, you know, because we talked about it, you know, most of the residents with the garages will actually put their trashcans, you know, within their garage. But here, we've kind of, you know, included this buffer, you know, so that it's tucked, tucked away so you won't be able to see the trashcans from the street side, which will help. And then, Tricia, if you go back to your presentation, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, the landscape, just a couple of the points. Just that one where you showed the buffer on the eastern portion of the site. I just wanted to, you know, quickly touch on that. Yes. Yeah, so you'll see the approved PASP on the site. And, you know, thanks for the, you know, feedback and the recommendations. You know, there are gaps within some of these areas that, you know, we will look at and, you know, definitely establish some type of, some type of additional landscape. However, you're not looking at your typical garden-style apartment community where, you know, it's three stories high. You got, you know, bikes, and you got stuff hanging off the back on the balconies. You're basically going to be looking at a, you know, four-unit townhome-type product, 468 unit, that has a little patio, has a grill, has, people will put, you know, additional seating out there. It's going to look like your typical single-family home, which is a big point to bring up. It's, you know, it won't be an eyesore, you know, anything that someone thinks that are typical multifamily building. And then just to touch on that, on Slide 12, Tricia, with the trees, you know, our intent is to preserve as many trees as we can on-site. That's, you know, we're not looking to cut down trees cost-wise and, you know, just for the environment as a whole. So right here, we are planning on keeping that, you know, as much of that, you know, bushel of trees is concerned. You know, we want that to exist. There possibly is going to be some, or some additional planting that we will do. But our intent is as many trees as we can preserve on-site, which we've done a significant tree study on, that will happen. So as far as that's concerned, if there's any questions related to that, I mean, we can, we can definitely tag-team some of this. But I'd like Drew just to come up and kind of touch on some of the sidewalk issues, you know, that Tricia had and some of the driveways.
Good evening. As Tricia said, I'm Drew Walker with Kimley Horn at 4201 Winfield Road in, in Warrenville, Illinois, where the civil engineering group and landscaping, landscape architects working with Anthony. So I guess it's going to be kind of hard to read. We, we tried to get it electronically to you guys ahead of time as well. But without black and white, it's a little difficult. Essentially, this exhibit, what we're showing is we're very much in agreement with Tricia's comments about pedestrian connectivity. And so the, the end product in the exhibit that we tried to show to have kind of in the record with tonight's approval, if that's the direction you guys go, would indicate we would end up with a five-foot sidewalk on at least one side of every single one of the private streets throughout the development. So that would definitely separate the pedestrian traffic from the vehicular traffic. So you'll have a 26-foot wide roadway. These are not, I wanted, I did want to kind of clarify. These are not like alleys. They're not like reduced from a two-lane roadway. They're, they're 26 feet edge-to-edge of pavement, which is adequate for two lanes of traffic. It's pretty typical residential street, edge-to-edge pavement section. And then you'll have, in addition to that, a five-foot walkway on at least one side of all the streets. So we clarified in this exhibit, it's hard to see because they're highlighted in yellow so you can see where they've been added. But essentially, all, all of the private drives will have the sidewalk on at least one side. And then what we did is confirmed the 22-foot driveway needs to be maintained. So now you need 22 feet from the edge of that walkway to the face of the building. You can't just use up that five feet or else people can't walk past, right? So all of those buildings would then be impacted and pushed back five feet to accommodate that driveway length. We've reviewed all of that. None of the buildings get within the minimum standard that was established in the PASP approval of 45 feet building, building spacing. Actually, most of them are, there's significant buffer. There's 75 to 55 feet in most cases. I think there's one set of buildings at 45 feet minimum. So just want to reiterate, we will absolutely comply with 22-foot driveways from either the back of walk or the edge of pavement to the face of building. The one dimension on there that's 20 feet was just measuring to the overhang of the roofline as opposed to the face of the building. So that's why it showed 20 feet instead of 22. But all buildings comply with that condition. We're in agreement that sidewalks should be added in front of all buildings and along all the streets on at least one side. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was very clear. I wanted to touch on a couple of things that Scott just said in his report, which really appreciate all the hard work he and his team have done. I mean, it's one thing for us to stand up here and say we have a report that works, but hopefully you guys understood that it's also been hard work with Kent County and, and the city to make sure that they're in agreement with that approach in the ponds and the management of stormwater. On the slope ponds condition, I mean, we're open, Scott. I, I think the reason that they're flat is the initial design was very much a, let's be wetland-style, natural-bottom pond, try to absorb the water. These are really great water quality practices that we try to do. It would be in keeping with the natural area around it. As Scott said, we've, we've learned there's, you know, not great infiltration measures. there's, you know, not great infiltration measures. Some people maybe disagree that the wetland plantings will absorb all of that quickly enough. So, if slope ponds is the preferred method, that's not an issue for us. It's just a matter of what's the design that people prefer. And on the freeboard issue, I just wanted to clarify too that the only reason that we don't have the necessary freeboard is it's a little bit of a unique condition. If you look at the one pond that's not meeting that condition is actually the pond that sits within the wetland area. So, our original design was just, well, all of this drains into the wetland. It actually needs to drain into the wetland to keep the wetland alive and wet. So, we just naturally, when it reached that spillway elevation, we weren't going to grade up any further because it's all within the same wetland area. If it's still important for the city and the county to provide that freeboard, that's totally fine. It's just, it was kind of the nature of that grading area. So, and, and I did want to clarify one thing that Scott said. I think the city still needs to dive into some of our public infrastructure, you know, like the roadway plan and profiles throughout the on-site. But we have actually been working very closely with Grand Rapids Public Works on many of the details for planning profiles of the sanitary sewer system and the water system. We have solicited a lot of feedback, so they understand where our points of location are, they understand where, how we're planning to serve the site. They've given us comments on what they'd like to see and standards that they'd like to be met. So, we have gotten significant feedback incorporated into the design from them, and we will continue to seek their approval before any construction can happen. Tricia, could you flip back to your presentation? I just want to make sure that slide that you brought up of your concerns that we've touched on, is that I think generally, my point is that we're in agreement with many of the things that she brought up. Maybe the overall one there, Slide 9? Where you kind of, so I think we talked on sidewalks, we talked on driveway lengths. I think Anthony touched on the units without garages. If you have further questions, by all means. And we talked about the landscape gaps and the preservation of trees. So, I think we hit the main items and just want to reiterate that we have every intention of kind of being in compliance with the things that we just stated and making those modifications as a condition of approval. So, I think that's all I have at this moment, but if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions to have of the developers at this point? Okay. Again, this is advertised as a public hearing. Entertaining motion to open...
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Support.
Motion by Tyler, supported by Pat, to open the public hearing. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
I would suggest that we have maybe a limit how long people talk, Kerry. If everybody talks, they're going to be here a long time. We want to give everybody equal time. I don't know exactly how you do that.
I think a three-minute time allotment should be sufficient at this point.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. So, as people come forward to offer their comment, name, address...
Frank Segal, 695 Lincoln Lawns, and I totally disagree that we have a limit for the taxpayers' time when the developer gets all the time. No, that isn't correct. I'll wait. I need more than three minutes.
Sir, we've set those up as the ground rules. If at the end of the discussion, if you want to have, be recognized, we'll take that into consideration.
I need more than three minutes.
Sir.
Anyway, we'll start with my slides, please. My first slide is an overview. This is one that was taken Saturday afternoon. This is the golf course here, and you can see Lincoln lawns coming around there. There's the little plot and the homes that go off of Lincoln lawns. The golf course, you will see there are different ponds that are there. What is happening now, we'll go to next slide. Okay, here's the view. This is Lincoln lawns right here. This is the houses behind us on Couster and Maple Row right there. Here's Lake Michigan Drive. Here's the city divide line, Walker, and here's all the golf roads. Here's the wetlands. Here's the sluice. And there's our... Okay, so we've got all of this going on here with wetlands going on, and now, we're finally addressing the issues that have been going on for the last 32 years of drainage. We're finally getting the Drain Commission involved, when they should have been involved for the last 40 years at least. Pauline Pullman, who lives behind us, right to the north, before she died, she said there used to be a stream that came all the way through, and the kids used to ride their inner tubes during the summer through the neighborhood. Next slide. Okay, this is Lake Michigan Drive. Here's the detention pond that used to be hole 18 because it no longer drains down through. The watershed area, Scott, starts at Fruit Ridge, the ridge area, waters on down through to Millennium Park. That's the water flow through the area that comes through our area. You'll go to the next slide. You'll see the backyards. Here's Pauline's backyard. We lived there 32 years, never had water in the backyard. This year, we have water. Nothing's been addressed. It's still there. Come see it. Come see it. We've got water in our backyards backing up. The city needs to address these issues.
Time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Address them. And build your property.
I'm Mike Hale, and a proud resident of Walker for about 25 years at 546 Fairway Drive. I'd like to address the issue, what you talked about, the time limit. First of all, we are the residents of Walker. We are the taxpayers. We are your employers. Therefore, you should listen to what we have to say because we live here, and there's more of us than there are of you. We're citizens of a free country. I still have time left. And being a veteran, I fought for this opportunity. And I think if you don't listen to what everybody has to say, I think that's profoundly sad. We are proud to be here, but we have an investment in this community. We pay taxes. Now, I know the Planning Commission isn't a paid unit, but if the city staff would listen to us, because this is our city. So, please remember that ours, that as a citizen, we need to be listened to as opposed to what happens in DC. Thank you.
My name is Mike Mackay, and I live at 601 Lincoln Lawns. I've been there for 40 years, and that's all I do is fight this water problem. For 40 years, I finally put in 24 yards of sand in my small backyard, 18 yards of black dirt, just so my yard didn't flood every spring and every time we got rain. I mean, something's got to get addressed here with that water problem. And that's my biggest concern. Thank you.
Good evening. William Stellama, 615 Lincoln Lawns. Originally, I didn't have any comments for this after I looked at the paperwork online, but something that came up tonight has me concerned. And it has to do with the no garages. Right from the very start of this, when we had a meeting, the landowners were invited to a meeting with the developer. It's been sold to us that this was going to be a development that would be in harmony with the single-family homes in the area. And they said it was going to be high-end, so we didn't have to worry about our land values, that it was going to be aesthetically pleasing, and, like I said, in harmony. No garages is not in harmony with the surrounding area. If this was a traditional apartment complex, wanted to come in and build, just like the ones right next to the property there, would that have been allowed? The master plan called for single-family homes. That's been deviated from. So, single-family homes, if the master plan had been followed, would all have garages, would they not? Would you allow houses to be built without garages? That's my concern, is that it's, this looks like kind of a bait-and-switch, where now we're getting down to the road, they think it can start slipping a change on us and decreasing the value of the property. That's it. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Sarah King. I live on Maple Row, 1059 Maple Row. I'm on the part of the street, I'm in one of the older houses built in 1960, and we don't actually have a sidewalk right along that main drag. So, I'm actually here today to talk a little bit about the connection of Maple Row to the development. So, I'm just wondering, is that still on the table, connecting it? Like, yeah, the road, like connecting Maple Row into the development? It looked that way on the plan.
Overall plan, it does show for the connection, nowhere through the Maple Valley.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Then, I guess, what I'd like to say today, since I think that's still in the development plan, still, the decisions are still being made, correct? Okay. I guess Maple Row shoulders a lot of the traffic burden, and it will keep doing the northbound as the connection, so adding more more houses. And I'm not actually like against the connection, but I am against the connection if we don't have proper planning. So, my part of the street is the only part in this entire development that has no sidewalks. And we're also a main exit. It's actually about a half-mile. I guess I should include Couster, if you guys are including them. They're actually in the same group as this part of Maple Row, but thought I'd speak for Maple Row tonight. I was hoping that we would consider, as you make this a full development, giving everyone their complete streets, including our last half-mile. It's also a pretty straight drag, so sometimes we have some speeders. So, I'm asking the city to work in tandem with this development to give our older neighborhood the same level of development as the Waterford does. I believe this would include proper sidewalks and lighting on our street, possibly even a stop sign or other street culminating methods near 10th and Maple Row. I'm not exactly sure how we'd get there, but I have been speaking with some city commissioners. I've spoken with Scott in email. But this sounds like it would need to be a special project that is moved forward through all of your support and through your work. So, I just want to continue to keep talking about it. Thank you.
You know, on that note, if Steve was here tonight, you know, he's our commission representative, I think he would probably speak up and say that they've made that piece of sidewalk a priority on Maple Row. And we've even put together estimates for Couster as well. So, I think Couster's a lot harder to do because it's a lot narrower, but I think Maple Row is their top priority.
I believe I recall that same thing as in the prior meetings as well.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Hurd. I live at 3518 Sunrise Lane, so I'm on the north side of the border. I applaud you all. I applaud you all as well. Thank you for your patience with us. Question that I have is, is there still the opportunity to have a 20-foot border or kind of a free land or whatever between the properties? And if so, between, if you kind of scroll up, between Maple Row and Couster, there's a line of trees there that needs some major attention that would be in that 20-foot section. Just on my property, which is the odd trapezoid-shaped property there, that one right there, there are some trees there that there's no bark on them whatsoever, and it's like a cluster of trees. The developers, I think, started cleaning up some of that area, but that really needs more attention, like, obviously, as soon as possible. And I'm all for preservation of trees as well, but some need to be, you know, preserved elsewhere, if that makes sense. 22-foot driveways, a little concerned about that, but I understand that you are approving that. With the homes that aren't going to have garages, I'm concerned with that. Does that mean it's going to be offered to park on the street if their driveways are full? I know Maple Row is a problem, especially when I exit, there's people who park on the street in Maple Row in the newer section, and it's right kind of on that S-curve, and it's kind of, if we're going to have more traffic through there, it's going to be a problem to have people park on the street there, even though their driveways are wide open. Again, same area between, on the top of the map there, between Maple Row and Couster, there's a lot of standing water there, and all that water seems to kind of, you know, it's sitting there because of its clay. But my yard, my backyard, tends to be very marshy, so to speak, for a lot of, portion of the year. And I would really, I'm hoping that through the development of that area, that that water won't be standing anymore, especially near Couster. There's a, you could probably put a sailboat in there right now. But anyhow, I appreciate your patience with us, and thank you for listening.
Any other comments? Here we go.
Who's not speaking? May I take your additional three minutes, please?
I asked that.
My name's Jim Jarch, 704 Comer Court, over on the Grand Rapids side. Just some quick points. Basically, yeah, single level, I've said this before, acceptable. I still like best the first plan, but we're beyond that. I think for both Walker side and Grand Rapids side, that was the best. When we're talking about the roadway and sidewalks, does this development have parking on the street? Is it allowed? No.
We'll look to the developer.
No parking on the street. Okay, so you act...
There's designated parking spots, but there's no parking on the...
Okay, so you have a full 27 feet of right-of-way. Nothing that's going to narrow down to one spot or anything like that, okay? And are your sidewalks right next to the street, or is a green area between?
The rest.
Okay. Could be hard for plowing then, because, you know, plows, it's got to go somewheres. Big thing, course our wetlands and such, and I'd like to make a comment about the first thing that we talked about, and getting rid of that wetland. Always remember, the water that these wetlands are taking care of, we can create storm systems and such, but they're all going to go downstream, they're going to fill up the Grand River, they're going to fill up Lake Michigan. And you can see our planet is becoming more wet. The funny part here, when we talk about the intended character, well, my funny thing is, it's not a green area anymore, so what's the character in it, right? Trimming or removal of the trees along the east side of Grand Rapids, or the east, yeah, on the east side for Grand Rapids, be good neighbors, please. There are a lot of trees that are there that do need to either be removed or trimmed, but wait till the oaks are in dormancy. That's all that I ask, because there's that big one oak tree, too. And as far as filling in between the houses, I think actually you need to plant your evergreens behind the houses because they've enjoyed a green view, and now, even though they're single-stories, it's an apartment view. I still don't, okay, the sidewalks behind the buildings, I don't understand that. You have sidewalks in the front. Why would occupants of these new apartments want somebody walking behind their home? You put your trash container out in your approach to the street. Although this is in the second phase, I still think it's a mistake to continue Lincoln all the way to Lake Michigan Drive. It's dangerous, and I think it's going to be nothing but problems. That Savannah should be an access road going back up to Lincoln lawns and everything. Do I get three more? No?
Anyway, for the most part, it's not too bad.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Entertaining motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, close the public hearing.
Support.
Motion by Pat, supported by Tyler, to close the public hearing. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Sir, okay, the public hearing is closed. Well, now, it's time for deliberation amongst the commissioners. Covered a lot of ground this evening. If I may, if you bear with me here, I just made some note of some issue points that have been raised, and just see whether we're in agreement with them, what the consensus might be. I guess the first off is with regard to having as many as 10 buildings that were initially shown to have their own garages, to not have garages. You've heard the explanation provided by the developer. You've looked at the layout. Any comments? And I'll start with Tom.
I'm dead against these units without garages. That's what we were presented with. As the gentleman said, upscale, garages, look like single-family. I'm sorry, if it doesn't pencil out, maybe you'll have a spot of green space. If you don't build a building without a garage, you've saved some money.
I'd object to that. He's only talking about 10 or 20 percent, and I think it's expensive. We've got to make these things so people can afford them.
That's not what we were presented. We were presented, these were all going to have garages, and they need to have. We were presented, these were all going to have garages, and they need to have.
All I can say is I 100% agree with Tom, but, uh, I feel as though we should be back to what we were originally presented with. I don't like the idea of having this large of a change at a final, uh, site plan. I think there's some other things that we need to have cleaned up a little bit more. Um, and I just don't care for the, removing the garages. I obviously have other comments, but we'll tackle those as the go.
Okay. Uh, from my standpoint, uh, to, uh, convert as many as 10 of the buildings to that, uh, without garages is a concern. Uh, they raise some good points as far as what they're looking at in terms of, um, viability to development, but, uh, uh, to that extent, it, it seems like it's a, quite a far departure from what was originally approved.
Yep.
The east, you know, there's apartments that probably don't all have garages, or they have carports. To the west, everybody would have a garage, so, you know, I, I think the, the area really, it's, it's kind of a mix, but, um, I, I think it's, it's a substantial change from what we originally saw.
I agree. I'm not in favor of taking away those, uh, the garages. Many aspects of that are the people that have a garage that are going to look across the street and see cars sitting in front of their house, or their, their place. So, it's not going to make the people that paid the extra money for a garage or two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and now they're going to look across the street and see cars sitting out in front of those that don't have garages. Um, and then they made a comment that, yes, we can have lower rent for the ones without garages, and that's not what we want either, um, because we'll get a lot of residents in there that we don't want. That's not what this, this plat was for. And you're going to have, you're going to have, uh, single-family homes across the street from Waterford Village, and some of those are not going to have garages on the other side, so I'm not in favor of it at all.
I agree. I'm not in favor either. Um, I, I count 39 buildings on this, on this plan, and to have 10 of them not have garages, that's 26 percent. Uh, that is significant and substantial, and not what we were presented with. Uh, so I'm not in, I, you know, I'm not in favor of that big of a change at all. And just to say, uh, to the developers, uh, we, you know, being sensitive to the increase in costs for your development, uh, can be sensitive to that, but that's not a consideration or factor, uh, before us, so, um, I guess that's what I have to say about that.
Okay, let's, uh, next one, and we'll start with Joe, pedestrian circulation.
We skip a Tom?
No, we'll, we'll come back to Tom. Okay, all right. So, uh, pedestrian circulation, as was raised by, um, uh, both Tricia and Scott as far as connectivity, uh, the developer has shown, uh, an alternative as how to, how to address that, to be responsive to that. Uh, Joe, what's your take on, uh, their solution?
I don't have any strong feelings on that either way.
Okay.
So, my personal feeling on it would be to have sidewalks on both sides, but I have family members that actually live in communities that don't even have sidewalks at all, um, that are in this kind of situation, and it actually works out pretty well. They predominantly walk down the main kind of street, and, and it seems to be okay. So, I like what they've done with the, the single. Obviously, they're trying to direct people more into between the buildings, um, but I think that, that's okay. So, while I don't, you know, personally like it, I've seen where it works, and that the scenario can work.
Uh, from my standpoint, I, I believe what they've, um, offered in response to the comments by staff is, is responsive to it, and it does provide, um, a better network within the development to address the, uh, pedestrian circulation.
Yeah, I think their solution was sufficient, and will meet our need, meet the needs that we think are there, so.
I would agree with those comments.
Yeah, I'm okay with the, uh, the additions they've done.
Um, I'm going to kind of go along with Jason and say that, well, it wouldn't be a personal preference of mine, I think, you know, they've done enough to respond to the pre-year, to the, uh, prior concerns and that we've brought forth, so I'm fine with it from a planning perspective.
Next was, uh, I had on here driveway length, but, um, I think it's a case here that, uh, given the, the prior approval, uh, of the PASP, the preliminary plan, uh, we accepted that 22-foot, uh, distance. So, uh, unless anybody has a, disagrees with that, that may be something that, uh, is, is, uh, addressed already. Um, uh, let's see, the, uh, landscape preservation, uh, there's one particular location that was highlighted by, uh, Tricia. It sounds like they had a, at least representative of that, they said that their, uh, their intent was to preserve the existing vegetation. Um, and it's just going to be a matter perhaps of, um, um, going a little more over in detail, perhaps directly with staff, just to confirm that as we go through. If it's all right with staff, is that that be delegated to, to confirm that that aspect of it is, is addressed in accord with what the planning commission is looking for.
Real quick, Terry, um, one of the things that I just thought of is, you know, we talked about preserving some of the trees, but do we have an, an actual map showing what trees are still going to be around, or what trees are going to be built, or is this all going to be buildings with two trees and just a, a borderline of trees? Are there going to be any trees in the middle of this, other than, I mean, do we have like a landscaping plan?
I can, yeah, I can bring you to the landscaping plan.
Okay, I just, just want to make sure we're not saying, keep the, these three trees, and that's all we're going to have, and then do the borders. Can have good, the, uh-
So, yes, they, they do have plans to have, um, landscaping throughout, and they also have, they also have this prototype that shows what the, what the landscaping around, uh, the units would look like.
Got it. I remember that now, just wanted to make sure.
But to go one step further with that, though, Pat, in, in between the individual units, there's not a tremendous amount of trees, and I think that was one of the questions that you were asking. You can see that there's some spots and spot trees between them, but it's not what it is in the front or around the perimeter of the property.
So, with the, the landscape preservation, the landscaping plan, um, are there general accord with that? I guess, uh, start with Jason.
Yeah, I was looking at that a little bit earlier too, and, and I felt like that was okay. Um, in regards to filling in some of the spots, I guess we would continue to encourage that some of those spots between, um, the existing properties, when they go to develop that, you know, be looked at a little more. This won't touch, um, some of those residents that are on that north side quite yet.
Someone has something going off back here, Mr. Frank.
I think that that-
That's a loud, um, and-
I don't know what that is. I'm sorry.
That's a real alarm.
Is that the building alarm?
It sounds like it stopped.
Um, yeah, with respect to the landscaping, um, yeah, some of that along the north line of the overall, uh, project will be in that subsequent phase.
Yeah, we're just not seeing it at this point in time because it's not far enough.
Correct. So, you all said, okay. I, I'm, I'm, I'm in accord with, uh, taking a, um, accepting the landscape plan that they've submitted. Uh, I think that, uh, on a staff level, uh, just look to, uh, Tricia to be kind of looking over that, as I'm sure you will be, just, uh, as we go through the development process. This is a, a large land area to cover, uh, and, uh, it'll take some patience to go all the way through the, the process.
I agree with what Terry just said, so I won't repeat it.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Pond design, it sounds like the, the flat bottom, um, there was a, um, statement made by the development group that they would work with staff to work more of a, a sloped rather than, uh, going, um, uh, flat on the bottom. Um, I'm presuming that another factor that may come into play is just maintenance, um, thereafter, as you get sedimentation building up, um, whether it's flat to begin with or sloped, uh, maintenance is going to be a key to it. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think if you would maybe just direct us to continue the collaboration, that probably is the best answer, because the county really wants to see, um, some grade across those. You know, we can see both sides of the, the issue, and I think we'll probably meet somewhere in the middle, if you're okay with that.
That looked good for everyone with respect to that, that item then. So, it looks like, I think those were the main points. Is there any other main point that, uh, we've overlooked? Okay.
One comment, we were hearing a little bit about the stormwater, um, and that would be something that I would encourage the public to take a look at, some of the plans that came in. I was looking at that quite a bit too, and, um, there's been an extensive job done on making sure that the water is staying in this particular area and the storm system that's going into it. So, in terms of the design, it, it's meeting the criteria that we're asking, but they've gone a long ways with that.
Yeah, if I may, I was going to say the same thing. Uh, this development is, the stormwater that, what you guys worked on with Kent County and everything, is pretty amazing with what you have to work with, because it is a tough spot. Now, as far as the neighbors, I, I don't have a solution, guys, about what to do at your lots. It's not our position to actually make the solution, so I, I would refer you to city or, or your commissioners, so, thank you.
Well, I have a little bit of concern about the drainage. I've heard some, you know, well, needs a few tweaks here, we need to review this a little more. I like some, a good, confident, yes, we've got it solved, um, we know it's going to work.
With, with respect to that, uh, I think that, uh, in the recommendation from the city engineer is that, uh, the design to this point looks like it's in good shape, uh, but they've been look, uh, staff has been working closely with Kent County Drain Commission and MDOT, um, MDOT indirectly, because, uh, with the roadway going through there, um, they have a stakehead in it awhile, as well, but, um, I think the point he made that, uh, it's imperative that, uh, Kent County, uh, Drain Commission has, uh, approves the overall drainage plan. And, uh, it sounds like it's moving in that direction, but it hasn't reached that, but I think there, there comes a point in time where that will be an approved plan, and that's being referenced in the approval.
That's my point. We're not quite there yet, so let's make sure we are there and we got it, everybody's confident that it will work, because it's been a tough area for how many decades?
Sounds like a long time.
Long time.
Well, I, I think this is intended to be a conditional approval, uh, depending upon ultimately the Kent County Drain Commission, uh, approval as well.
Well, the other thing, Terry, that, you know, we're looking at phase one, but everybody here is next to the single-family homes, which, are we talking about that yet? We're talking about developing this phase one, but what's going to happen? Has a single-family home been sold? Has that property been sold? Is that being worked on at the same time? Um, or are we going to have, we're going to wait two or three years while they develop this, and then that gets done, but nothing for the water up against the properties, my property, all the properties on Lincoln lawns? Um, is that going to be delayed while we do all the waterworks on the first part, phase one? That's, that was my, be my concern.
Well, in terms of the timing of things, um, let me offer this first, uh, it, it's, um, this is for phase one, uh, the, the phase dealing with, uh, the multifamily, and, uh, as, uh, Tricia pointed out, uh, construction schedule is being asked of the applicant, so they'd be able to speak to their phase of this, of the overall development, and, uh, I don't know what the timetable that was specified, I don't believe there was one for the, what would be the next phase of the overall development. Is that correct, Tricia?
Well, if we're, if we're talking about the development of the single-family, so that's all dependent on when, or who, or what? Um, so, the developer plans on selling that piece to a local developer or builder, and then, you know, you might remember that slide that I had that goes through all the different steps and the processes. Um, the, the single-family will have to come back to the planning commission to go through either the planning process or the site condominium process. Um, but as far as the stormwater and the infrastructure goes, um, you know, the, the, the ordinance requires any, any phasing, um, to be done in a way so that the one phase, so in this case, the multifamily, can stand on its own without, like, let's say then the single-family never gets built. Is the, is the multifamily portion of the development, can it stand on its own in terms of utilities and stormwater? And so, you know, this is more Scott's, um, area, but, um, this is why they're building a lot of this storm infrastructure first, so that it kind of lays the groundwork for the subsequent phases coming in.
I agree with Tricia.
Given, uh, going over these points here, uh, I think we generally had consensus, um, and it might serve as a basis for a motion on the final site plan that we have before us.
Could I all ask, make one quick question? Um, you know, as it relates to, to the garages, um, you know, we'd like to work with you to find an alternative, you know, there's, the reasoning, you know, of the no garages too, is the spacing issue. You know, and I guess from an aesthetic standpoint, you don't want to see cars in the driveways. Um, is there an alternative that we can build the garage? There's another, to go back, we have another concept where, you know, originally it was alleyways, and you would just pull into your garage. For some of these units, is there a possibility to just build a garage?
Well, I, I, what we're looking at right now is what we, is the plan that's before us.
Okay.
Um, in, in terms of alternatives, if you would want to, uh, come back with alternatives to be responsive to that, then I think it would be a matter of submitting an amended plan for the city's consideration.
Okay. Yeah, that, I mean, it's not our intent, and depending on how you, you vote this, but I just wanted to, you know, if there was any other considerations or alternative measures, so, thank you.
Does the public get to talk now? He got to?
Sir, the public hearing is closed. We are, we are in deliberation right now on the action before us.
He got to talk?
Sir, we're, uh, going to complete our deliberations. Thank you. Um, do we have a, a motion or a further conversation?
My opinion on the, the garages is the PSP was voted on and approved. This is a real big step away from it. I'm sorry if it causes problems, it's just a really big step away from it, so I, I cannot vote for this tonight, so.
I think it's appropriate to table it, and he can work on the garage issue and those other things we- I think it's appropriate to table it and you can work on the garage issue and those other things that we brought up and come back with another plan that for us to look at.
Yeah, so we have approval, approve with conditions, deny or table action to allow for a revised plan.
I think if you were to do a straw poll, you're gonna see most would want to do a table. I think approval with conditions, while most of the board here, and don't let me speak for anyone, but would say that they would want to at least see what a garage would look like on a final site plan. I don't think you're gonna see consensus of wanting to approve it, saying, yeah, it'd be okay, but you'd have to have a garage added to it. I think the rest of the items were in pretty good shape in terms of where everyone was at.
Plus, we'll get to see a plan where the sidewalks all in place, other than something that I saw tonight.
Well, and I think that's important to go through a final area of site plan is that it has everything in place. It also gives time to give, although I feel like I'm confident with the stormwater designs that have been happening and that going on, that gives time to get a little bit more of that yes that you were looking for too.
I'm sorry, I have hearing problems.
I would agree.
But the building without garages is a big issue, I can't get past that. That's what we approved.
I agree, that's where I'm at also.
I'd make a motion to table the Water Village RPD-2. As the final area site plan for Savannah at Waterford Village Multifamily Development is not in substantial compliance with the privilege of approved preliminary site plan for the Waterford Village RPD-2.
And specifically in terms of?
The garage. The garages are missing. And it needs to be conformed to what we already approved. I think it's too big of a, too big of a jump.
Okay, and is there support?
No, support?
Okay, we've got motion and support to table action on the request. I'm gonna take a liberty as a chair to take the comment from the applicant.
It seems the consensus tonight was that the only issue is the garages. So if we can go back to the PASP and make the garages work as it was originally designed, it seemed like that was the only issue amongst the commissioners. So if you approved that with the condition that the garages be added back, obviously the setbacks remain the same with your minimum requirements, you know.
No, sir, I'm, it's not, let's make a deal, I want to see the, I want to see the plan.
I would agree.
With the sidewalk.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Pat? Okay, a motion and support for tabling the request. All those in favor of tabling or request indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
No, sir, no, sir.
I said that I, we would consider that. Okay. Tricia, any other business?
We have a couple items, it's starting to get really busy. So we have quite a few things coming at you in the future. And we now have some tabled items that we'll see coming back. So we might get to the point where we have to limit the number of items on an agenda and bump certain items down the road. I feel like every day, some, a new stack of plans comes in and I'm kind of like, what is this? Um, so...
Can we add meetings? We've done that before.
I'll defend Tricia with that one, that it's, we're pushing our limits with the every-two-week process. When we get, when we get an extra week in a month, it's really nice.
Thank you, Scott. We also have the zoning board of appeals that is meeting, you know, every two weeks. But they don't meet every two weeks, but this upcoming week, just this week and next week just happens to be like jam-packed. Well, some things have to go on, but other things we'll have to... So other than that, you know, we have a lot going on, there's, it's late, so I'm gonna spare you. But there's gonna be a lot more multifamily developments coming your way. That's all I need to say.
Okay.
How did we ever let the Chick-fil-A dumpster get put in a...
Like I said, everybody had chicken biscuits in their eyes.
Sometimes there's hoops.
Well, actually, in Scott's defense, I think that that lot wasn't yet split when the Chick-fil-A came in. The Chick-fil-A was like, we're only gonna need this amount of space. And then they ended up splitting that lot off. I don't know if anybody else remembers it that way.
And it failed as a coffee shop or drive-in.
Chioda or something like that?
Oh, they withdrew their plan.
Other people either.
They didn't actually come to the planning commission. For that Chick-fil-A.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Could I?
Sounds good.
As far as closing remarks, there's been a lot of discussion about backyard drainage and things and we don't get a chance to defend the city at all with this stuff. But I think it's important to point out that we have a lot of plats around the city that are older than 25, 30, 40 years and have backyard drainage problems. And they're not necessarily city problems because it's all private water. And we struggled with this in Chesterfield Heights. We even put together a report that outlined all of the pockets of water that we had. It was 15 or 20 pockets that were private, with all private water. We laid out what potential solutions were, shared that with residents. And in most cases, they said, not worth it, I'm not gonna fix it. And so I think here, historically, we've met with some of the residents, some great people in this plat and helped them out the best we could. But ultimately, there's, you know, there's some private responsibility too that goes with that. And the city can't be spending all of your money on private property to help individual private citizens like that. It's difficult.
And they're not willing to participate financially in solving their own problems.
It's a tough issue. Sorry, Scott, I just wanted to make sure we got that in because, I want to make sure you're all on the same page and...
Well, that's what I was worried about, if they start digging holes for all these new, you know, multifamily places and dumping it in, because I've seen developments go and all of a sudden there's piles of dirt, you know, they gotta get it out of the way. And they don't really care where all these, you know, the single-family homes are gonna be, which is kind of next to all of our properties and their properties. And just want to make sure they don't create a mess before they get to that section.
Well, they're supposed to do cut-and-fill balancing on their site to ensure that they don't waste all of their money driving trucks of material away.
I know, but you know how job sites can go, they just start dumping and like, okay, well, we'll move this pile over to this pile, move this pile, but sometimes it doesn't happen as quick as, and then we get a big storm coming in. Yeah, there's another coke over there too.
North of Leonard there, where this is gonna develop, are we getting a ski hill? Is that what they're building? Is that mound of dirt?
Well, I'm sorry, I was distracted by, I just...
That corner, Leonard and Wilson.
Leonard and Wilson.
Oh, the farms?
Oh.
Are they building a ski hill?
Is there a big hill there?
Oh, yes.
It's probably from that connector between Shannon and Tall Timber.
Well, sometimes when the weight restrictions are on too, they can't bring material off-site. And so if they want to keep working, they have to pile it up and then take it out later. That could be. Or it could be a topsoil pile.
Yeah.
I do have a bone to pick with Tricia, who approved the billboard by Flexco there?
It's a great question, that's a great, that is a great question.
I think it is.
Well... I can't identify it as a billboard as defined in our zoning ordinance. Otherwise, I would be violating the constitutional rights of the person who wants that structure. So in a nutshell, we were taken to federal court because we denied the building permit because it, basically, our zoning ordinance, our sign regulations are outdated. And they need to be, they need to be amended to reflect some of the latest court cases that have, basically, it... I know, it's...
Sounds like double talk.
Not trying to be vague, but my, I'm tired now. But so basically, we, um... You can't regulate sign based on the content of the sign. And if you look at our zoning ordinance, a billboard is defined as a sign or an off-premise sign that advertises stuff not related to the site that it's on. Well, how would we know that if we didn't read the content of the sign? So as a settlement, we chose to allow the billboard. And we are currently in the process of amending our sign code to keep up with...
You know, the new Flexco building, 96?
Yeah, you can't miss it. It's got a very nice base. I mean, it's at least as big as the, you know...
Oh, it's big.
The now hiring Flexco sign that's on the side of that semi.
All right, all right, motion adjourned.
Sorry, I didn't mean for it to be that long.